Those people that do all that engraving, they don't know how to spell.
They don't know. So, our philosophy last year was to basically say, you want to do what you were doing last year, the issue though is there may be some changes from 2.3. Is there any changes in 2.3? No? Okay, so let's read down through a list of names of people that are currently doing the things they're doing and maybe vote on the entire slate. So, all right. So, Mr. Grove is our vice chair. Superintendent's recommendation for clerk, deputy clerk, and appointment of designees. Can you read through those names?
Sure. Amy Rogers continuing as our clerk. Our deputy clerk is Michelle Berta.
Okay.
And then designee continued to be Carol Johnson. She's still here.
Good. Representative MDGS, Senator Grove, continue to serve? Yes. Representative and alternative to head orders. That's these two will try. You were the primary and you were secondary?
I was secondary.
Yes, are you good?
Sure.
Great. Oh, the representative and alternative for the regional special ed program. Now, we had had Chris and you, yeah, Chris and Pudd, I think.
Yeah, I volunteered. We never did anything.
Yeah.
This month.
So, I would imagine Chris would still do this. I guess we can nominate him in his absence.
In a minute, I just had you as the rep. We should have.
Yeah, I was.
Okay, so, you'll see, and then we can do Chris's thoughts.
I think so, I think we will.
I think that's how it was anyway.
And we did have a policy committee last year, and we'll need to do that again. I think Pudd and Chris were on that together. Yeah? Keep that. So, that's the slate, right? And that takes us all the way down through 2.7. Right? Is everybody okay with that? Is there a motion to adopt that slate of officers for 2020?
So, Ruth?
A motion from Mr. Vine. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Grove, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose no. It's ordered. The 2020 meeting schedule, we got a chance to take a look. Is there any comments related to that? I guess we'll vote on that later. Right? That was in your pocket. Any discussion on that one?
It hadn't changed yet.
No.
All right. I guess we're good. We don't vote on that till later, right?
Right.
I think I saw it down there. All right, welcome. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of school for the sake of our students. We do want and plan to hear from our citizens, and there is time for public comment prior to action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves and their home district. If you ask, we also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable in length. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave by how material should the boards review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
No.
The motion, Mr. Grove, is her second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Vine, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose no. It's ordered. And we have a new student liaison.
We did.
Do you want to introduce them?
Absolutely. Come on up, Nova. We would like to recommend that Nova Guerrero is considered to be the student liaison.
For 2020?
Yes.
The calendar year.
Calendar year 2020.
Great, thanks Nova. Aye.
Welcome, Nova Guerrero.
You ever have any questions, just say what they are.
Absolutely.
You have to step up to the mic and the mic, you have to be kind of close, you have to move it to yourself.
They want to turn it on.
Yeah, just move it to yourself and whoo. There.
That's the hardest part.
It is the hardest part, but it's most important.
Does it work?
It does, you just got to speak in and out. Can you get close to it?
Hello? Oh, yes.
You'll be a rock star.
Okay, cool. So, winter sports will continue. There's a boys varsity basketball game tonight. Leo Club is planning a trip to the senior center, and they're going to play fun games with them. Quiz Bowl is just ended their season at 10-2. They'll play the Bull Run District Tournament on January 25th. Exchange students from Costa Rica will be arriving this week. Tri-County Honor Band will take place on January 24th and 25th. There will also be an all-district band event, January 31st and February 1st. Local scholarships have been, have become, recently become available for seniors, and they will continue to work on those in the upcoming months. No School on MLK Day, January 20th. The Pride Show had 18 acts, which included involvement of over 50 students and teachers. Acts varied from singing and rapping to juggling and dancing in an ugly sweater contest. The eighth graders and their parent mentors celebrated the upcoming holidays in December by creating cards for the seniors and the senior center. The Eighth Grade Academy is looking forward to an upcoming overnight trip in March.
Where to, do you know?
We're going to Great Will Flush and Golden Corral and Madison Water Park.
Wow. In March?
Mm-hmm, March 13th.
Wow, cool. Do you have any questions?
Um, no.
No, that's good. I appreciate you stepping up to the plate and a little good on your resume, right?
I hope so.
And you'll have opportunities to do other things with this board, which I hope you are able to take advantage of too. So, it's good to have you on board. I think we're voting on you later, so.
Yes.
You actually will show up in a minute, so you know.
Official.
Who's the official name?
Or me.
Adrian you.
And we'd like to also extend a special thank you for Scott, to Skylar Culberson for serving as our 2019 rep.
Thank you.
Hi, Skylar Culberson. Also know this, while we would love for you to stay and enjoy the school board meeting, don't feel like you're under any pressure to stay if you have things you need to do, right? We don't want this to be your excuse, like you're not doing well on your tests or anything. So, you'll be fine, and if you do, if you do need to do, you just need to do so. And if you want to stay, we'd love to have you.
Thank you.
Okay? Any questions? Thank you. Donations?
Yes, I would like to share with the board gifts that were donated by the businesses and community members to the staff holiday party that was held on December the 20th. So, I have the list up there.
That looks great.
So, Ballard's donated a gift bag. RPK and Bar Francis, the corner store, donated a gift certificate for $25. Beach Spring Gifts donated a gift bag. Central Coffee Roasters donated two bags of coffee. Eastwood Nurseries donated a $50 gift certificate. The Ripon Tavern donated a gift certificate for $50. Normata Winery donated two wine tastings for four. Off the Grid donated two $25 gift certificates with gift bags. Home Economics Wireless, they donated a wireless speaker. Pepper Berries donated a gift bag. Knuckles donated a $10 gift certificate. Scoopland Davis donated a gift certificate. The Green Roost donated a gift certificate. Gemini Artisan donated a gift bag. And Sarah Morris Horticulture Class donated a flower arrangement. Gray Ghost Winery donated 18 wine tastings.
Wow.
And Abercadabra Massage Amontis donated a gift certificate. We had a lot of, a lot of great gifts.
That's great. All right, we'll accept those gladly during consent agenda. Is there a motion concerning the adoption of the minutes for December 10th and December 20th meetings?
So, Ruth?
The motion from Ms. Vine, is there a second?
Second.
Second, from Ms. Meyer. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose no. It's ordered. Mr. Grove, did you have a chance to review the bills?
I did. New format.
New format, it's a new tool?
It is.
A new tool.
Power School Finance is up.
Power School Finance.
So, you remember, we were using an old integrated system called RDA, and it was very integrated, so it was very difficult. This drives with our student information processing system, and it pulls all our reports together really nicely. So, yeah, it's a power school system.
It's much easier to read that.
Oh, good.
And to scan down.
And I'm told it's much easier to process the bills when they go through accounts payable, so that's really nice, too.
So, I guess as far as the school year goes, though, we have half of our fiscal year in one system, half of our fiscal year in another.
It's all been.
It's all been moderated.
Yes, it's all been.
Great, thank, all the, thank you very much. All right, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? No. A motion from Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Vine, all in favor, aye. Aye, pose no. It's ordered. Have a superintendent.
Thank you so much. All right, so the report we have today, this evening rather, is the informational budget that I give every year. We're just starting out, so there's really not very much we know at this point, other than what the governor has proposed. And there's still quite a ways to go before that's finalized. So, right now, this is our beginning stages of planning, so we'll just go through what those numbers look like, what that impact will be to us, and how, what are the next steps in thinking about budget planning for us. So, state revenues are comprised of these different categories of funding. So, you have your standards of quality, which is your program funding, state funding for specific areas of instruction. You have incentive programs, categorical funding, and lottery funded programs. All of those kind of filter through a state formula that we all lovingly know as the local composite index. Ours has changed this year, and it has increased back up to 0.79. And we were at 0.7642, I believe, for this year. So, that change means if your local composite index goes up, usually your ability, your local ability to pay for the costs of educating your students goes up with that. So, you get less state aid. So, that's usually problematic for us. We had been pretty nervous about how that would look. So, I'll kind of go through what that did when we ran the governor's proposed budget through the local composite index. All right, so here's our revenue estimates on our SOQ programs. These are based on an ADM of 78. So, yes, we're going down again. This year's budget was based on 825.
Wow.
Yeah. So, and the state, I think even has us projected even lower than that, which they typically do. They do estimate us usually about 15, 20 students lower than what actually usually appears on our March 31st ADM. So, that's what we're basing this on. So, you can see there, no major changes to SOQ, other than, I mean, basic aid went down, and that's what we expected to see with, you know, the local composite index adjustment. So, when you look through all those, we're seeing in SOQ accounts of $78,965 less than we received last year in that category. But then, in incentive programs, we saw something pretty exciting, actually. We've been part of the mixed delivery grant project with CCLC and other childcare providers, and part of that was due to the, well, largely due to the Head Start being reallocated elsewhere based on our numbers. So, one of our advocacy points through that mixed delivery grant this year was to hopefully get VPI reinstated, which is your Virginia preschool initiative funding. We had that for one year, and it was a pretty minuscule amount. It didn't even cover half of the teacher. And I think it was about $12,000 the first year we had it, and then the very next year it was taken away from Rappahannock, and we didn't have access to the funding source anymore. So, they have reinstated it. I think we've shown that we do have numbers that do qualify, and also that our free and reduced lunch population has come up so much, too. So, that's an indicator. And then, there was additional monies at the state level given to preschool and VPI expansion and things like that. So, I think that's why we're seeing that funding source, and also a little bit of money for early childhood. So, games of skill, we got some money there, too. That was our pilot of our video gaming.
Oh, oh.
They gave us some money to cover the technology costs for that.
Oh, that's good.
Yes. Which is actually going pretty well for one a year. All right, so incentive accounts, we saw an increase of about $14,720. Categorical programs, increase of $5,095. State revenue, this was exciting to see, and I think this is part of that agenda with lottery funded, the K-3 primary class size reduction I've highlighted there, because that's something we've wanted as well. That's a priority area that's come up with the staff, especially when we're looking at reading literacy and early childhood development, especially with a needier population usually. You want those numbers lower, as low as it can make sense. And we were pushing some of our numbers upwards of 23, 24 in those grade levels, which is really difficult, you have to differentiate so much. And even our preschool class, we're at capacity, and there were some children that were waitlisted, but then CCLC was able to pick up others in first step and then find other fundraising sources. So, I do know that we've been able to provide for all of our at-risk four-year-olds, which has been wonderful.
What's that number?
Altogether, we'll give that comprehensive report, will be next month when we do that. I'm not sure what their final number was, but in our class, we have 19.
Yeah.
Yes. So, that was good to see supplemental basic aid didn't go up.
How did that happen?
Because when our LCI adjusted, it's a difference.
Oh, great, because they took us out last time.
Right, well, we were in there, but because it went down, we lost some money there. And now, because we piggyback on Madison, the Madison Agreement does that for us. So, now there's a bigger difference, so that's where you see.
Oh, that sounds, that's a lifesaver.
It is. So, totally, total lottery funding saw an increase of $115,000. So, overall, state revenue, we're not as bad off starting out as we originally thought we would be with the LCI adjustment. So, we're starting $56,348 in the black.
That's great.
It's good.
That was scary. Yeah, that was scary.
Yes, but.
Yeah, we need to vote this time.
Oh, yeah, I knew it. But, there's still a lot more cost to what the governor has proposed. So, a lot of the compensation supplement for the required 3% increase for teachers and, well, all SOQ professionals, that doesn't come to us until the second year. And even then, it's a very low amount compared to the cost of giving the 3% raise. Additional guidance counselor staff is in there, too, doesn't cover that. So, there's some things we're going to have to tweak and work out to figure out how we're going to pay for that. And the $52,000 increase for Virginia preschool initiative, that has to be used for preschool, so you can't.
Can't budget.
Yes. And we'll talk more about options for preschool at next month's meeting, where we give an actual update about our mixed delivery partnership and the collaboration first step, everything we found out, scenarios, what we, and that will be a joint meeting between both boards, where we get to make some decisions together as a community about, you know, what our responsibility is to our kids and our families.
Yeah.
Yes. Federal funding, that makes up a portion of our budget as well, and those projections are based on the previous year. This time last year, I did have some preliminary numbers from the state. This year, they're not releasing those until later next week. And even then, they're very preliminary. The actual numbers don't even come out until usually August, when we get that. And then they amend them, and we have to change them again. So, yes. So, and then we reconcile those differences in the supplemental appropriations process with the county, and we've been working on trying to make that as soon as possible. So, we'll continue to do that. So, here, everything is just keeping the way it was this year, so no differences there. I'm sure there will be, we just don't know what they are yet. So, for planning purposes, I didn't see anything in the legislation or anything that was going to, it looked like it would be anything earth-shattering in the federal money, but it could have been. We'll keep an eye on that. So, our projected revenue summary is here. So, a change of $56,348 per state. Federal, I'm putting zero here, but I'm not sure what that will be until I get preliminary numbers. And then, there's just a lot to be determined as we walk through this process. So, this is just very preliminary. Variables that affect budget planning, there's a lot of them, like health insurance. We won't know that usually until about March, what that will be. In this budget, I think we're going to work with a number of 8%, but we've, you know, been working really hard on our staff wellness policy and things like that. So, our health insurance has been 0% increase for the last three years. Yeah. So, hopefully, we can continue that. That would be wonderful, but we have to plan for adjustments. So, General Assembly, Finance Committees, House and Senate, that, these numbers will have to funnel through that process as well. They'll make amendments adjust before we get a final budget from the state. Staff intent forms will be going out this week, and that really gives us an idea of what our staff are doing, because we need to know who's retiring, who's leaving us for other things, who wants to transfer. I mean, it's a good way for us to get to know and look at what our staff intends to do for next year. And that is a big piece in the planning puzzle, because you need to know who you're replacing and who are leaving, movements and things like that. Actual allocations for state and federal funds, so we have to wait for those numbers. Actual ADM and fall enrollment, those things we don't know. So, see, isn't this fun? It's like the whole budget process is all conjecture until you know after it's built, so it's kind of equal. Best guesses and more. Budget priorities that we have identified so far, the central office and the staff at the schools, these are the areas that are critical. Profile of graduate work, we want to continue with that. Everybody seems to feel like it's the right conceptual framework, it's also what our strategic plan is built around, and we are making great gains with that. So, we'll continue to meet that need. Early childhood is a big deal, and we're seeing the effects of that through what we've been working through, the mixed delivery grant project, and there's just a really big push at the state right now to invest in early education, showing the payoff later in less human resources and monetary resources, and the benefit for the children is huge. So, that's what we'll be looking at, that is a priority in this area, I mean, for the superintendent anyway, the superintendent's budget. Teacher staff raises, we do believe is very, very important. For Rappahannock, we have fallen behind a little bit. We did really well last year with going above the state increase, and with 3% over two years, we don't really think that's enough for teachers. So, we'll talk more about how, what we think we should do with that. And I know there's a lot of advocacy across the state and other superintendents. Yes, and the Coalition of Small and Rural Schools is really pressing for teacher raises and more compensation supplement money given for that.
There's no requirement in the state at this point for that? Do you have, we fulfilled our requirement?
No, but starting over, this is the new annual, so 3% over the next two years.
Over the next two, right.
Yes.
So, there is a requirement.
There is, yes. And that can change, it's been adjusted before. So, we'll just watch what the House and Senate Committees do. They may increase it, they may say, no, we can't do it, who knows? So, until that point, but that's the mandate, that you have to face everything, you have to go with whatever they say.
Right.
For SOQ, and SOQ pretty much ties in all of your, all of your staff. Now, the benefit for us, because of our local composite index, is when they have a lower mandate, we can separate out a little bit what we want to do with compensation. So, say we think teachers, as a standalone group, should get a higher increase, then we can do SOQ for everyone else and try to lose teachers to be comparable to the market. So, there's certain scales you have to adjust like that sometimes. So, that gives us a little more flexibility. Becoming trauma informed is a big push. We've seen more children in recent years in trauma and experiencing some really difficult things. The social worker has been instrumental and has been great, and we'll be updating you through the budget process on what those numbers actually look like. It's very compelling. So, we're going to continue that work to become more trauma informed. The community priorities survey, we can act it today. This is when we start that. So, we're asking the community as well to weigh in on what they feel is the most important in the budget, in the school budget this year. It's very quick, it's just three questions, and it gives us a lot of information very quickly. We had great, a great return on that survey last year, so I anticipate we will this year.
And people can get to that through our website and through Facebook page?
Yes.
Or probably a hard copy somewhere.
If they want one, yes, they can request a hard copy, too. Now, board priorities, too, this is one we can, we can do that in our regular meetings as well, but also in a work session that we have scheduled 21st.
21st, next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday. So, you can.
6:30?
Yes, at the school board office. So, that's just a chance to go through and digest whatever we have and talk as a board about what you feel is priority, priority areas, and you can give direction to me and Stacy as we work on building the budget, what you feel is, it gives us a sense of your direction.
Will we have this survey at 10?
We'll have some, but it doesn't close until February 8th. That's really all we have at this point.
I was going to ask, are there any, so, are there any new requirements from the state at this point that we know of? So, if they give us money typically, there's strings attached. Is there new strings?
They, they were going back and forth. The big one was the reducing the student, the counselor to student ratio. So, they did end up putting that in. So, the mandate doesn't take effect in the money, therefore, it doesn't come with it till the second year. But, you kind of want to plan for that. So, the ratio is 250 to 1.
That's the goal.
Yes, the goal. So, one counselor for every 250 students.
All right.
And that's, I mean, our ratio is currently at that. So, we met that ahead of time, we thought that was okay. What it doesn't do is give us flexibility, and this is another talking point the superintendents have been working on. Guidance counselors are, you know, have a particular role, and there's other areas like social work and behavior intervention and other specialists that way, that kind of fit under the counseling, counselor category, but this is very specific to just school guidance counselors.
Right.
So, we were asking for some flexibility in that language, I would say, you know, under the counseling umbrella, because different schools need different, you know, we have a lot of advising capacity here, so do I need more advising and guidance, or do I need more specialized, so it ties your hands a little bit.
Over the last 20 years, the role of a guidance counselor changed dramatically.
Yes.
Because of the standardized testing and tracking, all of that, and the guidance counselors picked up a lot of different roles that they didn't use staff to deal with. And so, it diminished their original role, which is probably a response to that.
I believe it is, yes.
To increase the ratio. I would already have that.
Yes. Yeah, so that makes it very built in. So, that's one area, they were, that's really the big one. And then, the rest has been really invested into early childhood and making sure we're doing that correctly.
Which we are.
Yeah.
So, we're ahead of the ball, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
And it's very nice to see the VPI coming back, because I did listen.
Yes.
The additional funding.
Yeah. That Madison Agreement's a good value.
It is, for sure. Any questions?
Any questions?
Want to know more?
Yeah, more. It's big at this point.
But, I mean, last year, so last year, the first work session, we accomplished a lot, because we basically had a conversation about, you know, what are the remaining moving parts, and what are the priorities of the board? That's what we need to be prepared for next Tuesday, is what are our priorities as a board that we're trying to communicate, so.
And we'll have some numbers for you, what the increases will cost. If 8% is the cost, this is what it will cost. So, when we have, when we say these are board priorities, well, here's the cost of what So when we have, when we say these are board priorities, well, here's the cost of what we need to do. So how do we find, and what are the creative ideas that?
And a priority may be to keep things that we already have.
Well, yeah.
I mean, as opposed to.
What's working, what can't work.
Reducing the services that we have right now.
Right.
And.
And rehand it. And we'll be there to reinforce that. And that'll start next Tuesday.
Yes.
And are we announcing our other meeting?
Yes, we're scheduling, we've been talking about that for a while, and I did mention it at the Board Supervisors Meeting last week, too, that we want to have a kind of a budget strategies meeting with Mr. Curry and myself and a member or two from each board, just to talk about these challenges that we have and what the state has that we have to do and how are we going to meet it. And there's some, there are some challenges on the horizon, especially one that we're seeing right now. John and I were just discussing this week, and almost at a crisis at this moment, but with Medicaid, our Medicaid annials keep coming back. So, and these are services that you have to have in school-based services. So how do you find the money for those that are required when they're being rejected by Medicaid? So that money has to come from somewhere. And what we were calculating could be if our caseload gets much bigger for a full-time person rather than contracting. So, I mean, that's a, that's a big deal, and it shouldn't be that way. So those are things we have to talk about. And DSS has been integrally involved, and we're trying to access as much funding that way for the state as we can, but for services, yeah.
Now, that meeting right now is, so that meeting is designed to have two school board members and two supervisors and, and our two administrators. And the public is welcome. It's the twenty-eighth, which is also a Tuesday from five to seven, I think is what I saw. But the dilemma is, when more board members show up, it would get complicated, right? Because then we got to have an official meeting, and we'll be, we can't have a meeting, right? So the goal was just to have more of an informal discussion about what were the concerns and raise the knowledge across boards and then bring that information back. And that's kind of what we're thinking there. I think Larry and I are currently planning on meeting at the twenty-eighth, unless I'm traveling, in which case we'll call somebody to take my place. School Board Office, five o'clock on the twenty-eighth of January, Tuesday, right? And so the public wants to come, they're welcome to come. I'll thank for designing a time of public coming, because it's not an official meeting. It will be an agenda. We'll simply be having a discussion, a roundtable discussion of challenges and approaches, right?
Will you take notes for those of us who aren't there, or we'll have some kind of a synopsis?
You know, I'm trying to take some notes.
That'd be great, yes.
You should take some notes.
We should all know.
Somebody, I'm picturing somebody showing up with a video camera.
Don't have a video camera.
No, I'm sure somebody will be there with a video camera, and you'll be able to watch the video, too.
I'd rather just.
Probably.
I'd rather just know what your thing is, because it's more important.
What does your calling?
I'll call you.
Yeah, it's a good point, though. Yeah, we should take some notes.
Yeah.
Good, so thank you very much. A lot of mysteries still, right?
Yes, yeah, at this point, yes.
Waiting for the big surprise.
And that concludes my reports.
Thank you very much. Do we have a Headwaters report tonight?
I don't have any report for this one.
MBGS?
This Thursday.
Okay, cool. Okay, informational items, you saw the VSB A code of conduct that was attached in the, to the agenda. And basically, if anybody's wondering what that is, it basically says that we'll do our jobs and we'll behave ourselves. That's all of this, there's twelve points here, and that's basically the summation of it. And it says, you know, we'll be polite and professional, and we always have the interest of the children and welfare of the community at heart. So we'll be voting on this code of conduct and signing it.
It's online somewhere, if somebody wants to read it.
Yeah, it's online.
It's on there.
It's the standard VSB A code of conduct. Of course, the alternative is, we go off for a day, a training cycle to Charlottesville, and we write our own, which nobody seems to want to do, so. Plus, it costs money to do that, why not?
No, we're not.
We don't want to do that, so. All right, your statement of economic interest for, have to be the Amy before when?
Every third. First, but since that's on a Saturday, it's the third.
Thirty, the thirty-first of January.
I'm sorry, no, the first of February.
The third of February. So they're dating about the third of February, right? So you don't have those to her, get them in.
That's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine, too.
Two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine.
True, to get it in.
Yeah, don't forget this one.
She just keeps, she just keeps them, and if they ask for them, then we surrender them, but.
It is what it is.
Yeah, public comments, who might like to address the board's seating? Yes, Gary.
Gary Angel Hampton, and I'm here on behalf of Headwaters, just to give you a little update. It's, our representative is diligent and always on the ball, but things have been a little, with the holidays and everything, and stuff is happening, and I thought you might just want to hear about it. The past six months have been busy for Headwaters. We updated our bylaws, we moved our offices to the Washington School, we elected new officers, and we hope to be able to announce a new executive director in two weeks.
Oh, two weeks.
The search committee has met, recommendation has been forwarded, the chair has been delegated to negotiate the contract, to have it to the board by next Monday's board meeting, on which we'll vote, and hopefully by Tuesday, or we left. By Tuesday, we may have some news that we can announce to the community. But what I'm here to say is that we're looking forward, well, we also approved our new strategic plan and strategic goals. So the past six months have been busy, and we are hopeful that the next six months will show some real energy and activity. I should report to you, if you didn't already know it, that you have a very ambitious, aggressive, creative, initiative-taking, proactive superintendent. And if we had any hope of resting, they're gone, so. Because the first month of this new year has seen about four or five initiatives that we are reviewing. And hopefully, consistent with Headwaters' strategic plan, we are committed to investing more of Headwaters' resources to actually aid students and advance education than simply being invested for the future. So we're hopeful that in this collaboration with a dynamic staff, not just the superintendent, but the staff, that we will continue to see proposals sent our way from teachers and Jenny Capes, among others, and there are many. And when they're worthy, we hope we will be able to be a part of the funding that will augment what the citizens of Rappahannock can afford to pay for their children's education. So just bring that to you, and we will probably, you'll hear some more things as time progresses. But there's some very exciting programs, initiatives that are already under consideration, and we look forward to working with the school. And for me, the whole reason for this is so that our students benefit. And that every opportunity, every enrichment opportunity, every additional educational opportunity that we can possibly provide, while they're here in this county, we want to see that they get. So thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Gary. We're very fortunate to have Headwaters.
And now I need to run, because the choir director at my church only gave me so much free time to come talk to you.
I know.
And see how I'm married to her, I really had to take that. I don't want you to think that I'm speaking and running, but thank you.
Good to have you here, Gary, and thank everybody at Headwaters.
We'll do.
We are, we're very fortunate to have a relationship with you all. Anyone else? All right, is there any comment related to the budget 2021? Does anybody have any comments about the budget that you'd like to share with us? Ideas? Very treasure county. All right, moving on then to action items. Is there a motion to approve the 2020 meeting calendar?
So moved.
You have motion, Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Groves, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered approval as student lays on Nova, what's Nova's last name?
Carrero.
Carrero. Is there a motion to approve Nova Carrero as the student lays on 2020? You have motion, Ms. Groves, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Bynum, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. Is there a motion to approve the VSB A code of conduct for our board?
So moved.
You have motion, Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer, is there any discussion? It's a good thing to have.
It's good to have.
It's a good thing to have.
Good reminder, that's good.
We do this every year?
Yes.
We do it every year.
We don't really need it.
Yes, we do.
We really need to do it every year.
We don't need to do it, but that's all right.
Well, we need to do it.
We do do it. You do.
You're so nice, it doesn't matter.
We do have a motion on the table, right? Did we already do that?
And second.
And we're discussing it?
This was discussion, right?
This was discussion.
I just couldn't remember back far enough, if we actually had a motion. So we do. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered, our next regularly scheduled meeting is, I think, that's listed right here. The eleventh of February.
That's not correct, it's actually in the high school auditorium. Because it's the public, the joint meeting.
It's a joint meeting?
Yes.
All right, so February the eleventh will be in the auditorium, and it will be a joint meeting.
It will be.
We didn't do that last year.
We did. And this one will, that's where we'll give the presentation. We have two planned, one for the preschool update, because we have to make some decisions. Also, to share some very important pride survey data with you from our students, and it's about the, you know, social emotional health of our population.
And the work session that's happening a week from today, the twenty-first is six-thirty, and of course, it's going to be on the twenty-eighth, which is not an agenda called meeting, but is a discussion, a roundtable with both boards present. Is there, we have a motion to go into closed session?
I move the board convenes closed session for the following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointment of staff members for administrative classified coaching positions, resignation of a classified position, and discussion of superintendent's goals pursuant to code, Virginia Code Section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A one.
Thank you, Larry. You have motion, Ms. Groves, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? So we're in closed session. So we'll take a recess, we're going to be in.
Goals that we, that I just passed on to them, but they were interested to hear about renovations at the elementary school and exchange students coming to the high school and various activities. It was, it was good and cordial, and I feel like they're ready to work in a bipartisan manner as well. So that is encouraging.
Very good, thank you. All right, so we're just recessing until we say goodnight, in case you're not coming back. All right, so we need to certify, or grow certified? Westinghouse certifies and also certify pursuant to Virginia Code two dot two dash three-one-one-nine-one, certify that I've had no, I have no involvement in the hiring decision of the GED tutor position.
Do see, I'm writing.
And I also have to make a certification pursuant to code two-point-two dash three-one-one-nine-E-two, that the employment of the GED tutor is based upon merit and fitness and the competitive rating of the qualifications of the individual, and that no member of the board had any involvement with the hiring decision.
All right, we have a personal report. Is there a motion to approve the personal report as it was presented to us, the seat?
So moved.
You have a motion, Ms. Groves, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Bynum, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? And so moved. And so we now have an assistant elementary school principal.
We do.
Dr. Grinsel can share something with us about that.
Absolutely, Jennifer Wessinger will be our new assistant principal at the elementary school. She comes to us from Culpeper. She has two master's degrees, one in administration, one is a reading specialist. She has about twenty years' experience teaching at various levels, ranging from first grade to fifth grade, primarily with reading and intervention. She's, she was a top candidate and a solid choice, and we're thrilled to have her.
And the remainder of the positions were substitutes and the like?
Yes.
All right, there's no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a motion, Ms. Bynum, second, Ms. Groves, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
And so moved, so ordered. We're done at seven fifty.
Seven.
It was eight o'clock? It's seven fifty-eight.